What page are we on, Norm?
Um, I think we probably want to go to sheet four.
Thank you.
For the record, ladies and gentlemen, engineering associates, I am here representing Plainfield Barrages and Storage this evening for a property at 750 Norris Road. This is on the corner of Dow Road and Norris Road. And, I'm sorry, Dow Road and, yes, in Norris Road. This is a, this is a parcel that we were here for sometime last year. We had this rezoned from residential to commercial. It is 0.834 acres and what we are proposing is a climate-controlled storage facility. This is a 190 by 55-foot building. It would be accessible in four different directions. Well, actually, at six, we've got two entrances on the long sides of the building and one entrance on each end. There will be an office associated with it as well. I did provide some photos that I posted on the town's, on the town's permitting board that essentially showed, now, this is similar to those things like, I think they're called Cube Smart, I'm not sure if you've seen them. But typically, you know, these buildings have, it's all interior climate-controlled storage. It's not like your typical self-storage facility where you've got the roads of the low buildings with garage doors and everyone is accessible from the outside. This is, this is the type of facility that I think is lacking here in Plainfield. Obviously, we have a lot of the typical self-storage facilities, which fairly, we tried laying out on this site initially, but due to the fact that it's only, you know, slightly over .8 acres, it really wasn't working. And from the standpoint of the owners and developers, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to do something like that here. So, in case of point, what we did is lay out this building here where it would be, you know, accessible from the outside, but it would be climate-controlled. What we found in the past, we know of a couple of these, one of them in Potten, for instance, that these types of facilities are very, very popular with professionals, attorneys, doctors, things like that, where they need to store records in an environment where they want to make sure that they're not damaged. But there is flexibility within it. You could have, for instance, you know, we're showing, if this had, say, 10 by 10 units inside of it, you could get about 140 units in there. If they were 5 by 10, you can get 280 units in there. Now, these are not a big traffic generator. Many, many of the people that utilize these units might come there one time if they move in or so forth, they want to put some things in there, or if professionals put some records in there, they keep them in there for long-term storage. We found that the people that we've worked with and clients that build storage facilities say sometimes you may not get anyone there for the entire week, and sometimes on weekends you may get three or four people. So, this is not a high-traffic producer by any stretch. The property previously had a single-family home on it, has been since demolished, and the site has been cleared. This has a public water, public sewer, and there's also a gas line you'll be able to use here. We have requested a couple of waivers for this particular facility just because of the type that it is. First of all, your regulations call for self-storage facilities to fence around the entire perimeter of the building. We are showing fencing around adjacent to the abutting properties of the non-long roadways. The safety and protection and privacy of these types of facilities is due to the fact that they're only accessible by key. So, the self-storage facilities that have the exterior garage doors and so forth, although they're controlled by a gate and a fence and the wrenches of those types of facilities have to actually go through the gate to get in there, this is similar in that you have to go inside the door. So, with that in mind, we feel as though the fencing along the roadway is really not necessary here. Secondly, we've asked for a waiver of a 25-foot landscape buffer. We are showing fencing, privacy fencing, which would be like a final stockade fence along the northern and eastern sides, and it's going to be supplemented with landscape greenery as well. These will be evergreen trees we pull, we pull for the M O B N R M, by the way, which get pretty large. One of the things here that kind of went to our advantage is that the soils out here are very excessively drained. These are hinkly sands and brabbles. So, by virtue of that, we were able to utilize these types of soils to control the stormwater. We do have to tie into the state drainage system as an overflow mechanism for these. We do have approval by the Canadian D O T. They review the plans for accessibility, for safety and sightline, and for drainage, and they did approve this plan for us. For, so essentially what we're doing is we've got a series of catch basins on site. They will be retrofitted with the flood guard inserts beneath the frames. These are like a filtering mechanism that helps remove things like oils and grease from the stormwater. Then we have subgrade stormwater infiltration system with a second layer of stormwater treatment called an isolator road. And those isolator roads help to remove sediment and grit, anything that might be entrained in the, in the flow train that comes off of the paved areas. We also have sumps in the catch basins as well, as this would be infiltrated. This is the ground we serve, we want to make sure that we've got clean water to do so. All of our calculations demonstrate that we've got reductions in peak runoff from the site for post-destruction conditions when compared to pre-existing conditions. For lighting, we are showing building-mounted lighting, and we're showing bottlenecks around the site perimeter. We're not proposing any lighting standards, 8, 10, 12-foot high lighting. Everything will be at ground level. Everything is sheltered, be dark sky compliant, as to not create any kind of issues with light bleeding across the property lines. And obviously, the fencing and the landscaping there we're proposing will do the same. I do have a, just a real schematic layout of what the interior of this could possibly look up, look like, just to kind of give you a flavor of what we're dealing with here. So, I'm just going to pass these out to the commission.
Now, in regards to the waiver requests, so there's a waiver request for the required 25-foot vegetated buffer. Is that for the entire perimeter of the property or just the part that's facing Route 12?
That's the part that's, that's the part that's, or the abutting property against the residential properties.
Okay, so on the north of the side?
North of the side and the eastern side.
Okay, but you do have, so is it a 20-foot vegetated? Because you are showing vegetation here on sheet five.
Yep.
So, it's not that you're asking it to be waived entirely, you're asking it to be...
No, not entirely. We've got about 13 feet.
Okay, so the request is actually to waive the 25 feet in favor of 13 feet, not a complete waiver of no vegetated buffer?
That is correct.
Okay, just to clarify.
Show me an elevator shaft. How tall is this building?
Two stories.
About 45 feet, 30 feet?
No, it's only allows 30.
Okay, it was, okay, so 30 feet height maximum?
Yep.
And then for the fence waiver request, is that just for the 12 side?
Just for the road traffic.
Okay, because on sheet five, I do see that you do have a fence, and it appears that it does go the entire perimeter of the property except the Route 12 entrance, right? So, this is showing the fence here?
Here.
Here?
Correct.
So, no fence along Dow and no fence along Route 12?
That's correct.
Okay, and then there's landscaping, but not a vegetated buffer on the Dow roadside?
Yes, that's correct. We're going to have just some, like, dwarf fallen trees there.
Okay, and the entrance on Route 12, is that an existing curb cut or is that a new request from the D O T?
That's a new request.
New request.
The existing curb cut is actually on Dow Road. There is a curb cut there.
And what is the distance between that driveway and the intersection? And I know that's probably D O T jurisdiction, right?
Right. Which driveway, Route 12?
Route 12, yep.
This is, it's about 250 feet. But we did have to demonstrate sightline past the traffic light.
Yep.
On the assumption that there was a green light and somebody was standing on the gas trying to get through the green light before it changed, so.
All right, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience with a comment or question on this application, now's your opportunity. Any comments or questions from board members? And any comments, questions from staff?
Just to speak to the waiver request for the fencing along Dow Road and Route 12. The fencing is required by the regulations for standard mini-storage units, and that's because of the nature of the mini-storage where you have exterior garage-style doors, and they wanted it to be secure. The commission wanted it to be secure, so that's why they require it. This is a much different setup from the traditional mini-storage where you do not have any exterior garage doors. Everything is on the interior. The building provides a security rather than chain link fence.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions, John?
A question regarding the maintenance with stormwater system.
It's outlined on sheet nine, so essentially, the inserts and the catch basins should be checked seasonally to make sure that there's no excessive sediment buildup in it. They do have these little blocks of absorbers that just drop right in there. So, these things are resourcing, you pick them up and you drop them in there. In the event of excessive storms, if the, if the filtering mechanism gets overwhelmed, there is an overflow mechanism associated with these catch basins so that it doesn't end up puddling or pooling in the parking lot. As far as the below-grade storage itself, there are inspection reports associated with the isolator road that is used to clean the stormwater. These can be opened, and you can view inside of it, but if there's excessive sediment, then it just has to be back trucked up.
By seasonally, do you mean quarterly or...?
Well, seasonally, typically in the spring, because you assume that you have sands on these, on these parking lots in the wintertime, and usually at the end of the fall to make sure that there's no leaves or debris. Make sure that makes it happen.
Any other comments or questions, yes?
Kevin Cunningham, 405, Mr. Conroy. A two-story building, it doesn't have an elevator, and it's so, it will have a battery backup in case of any...
Thank you. Good luck, Norm.
Yes, it will have an elevator, and, yeah, we can certainly make sure it has a battery backup as well.
So, in the event of emergency power outage?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, there are stairways in there as well. So, we're, so we're going to have stairways at each end of the building, so if by any chance the elevator is unusable, we can use the stairways.
Any other comments or questions on this application?
It's, I'm sorry, I'm going to just follow up on Mr. Cunningham. Does the ADA report compliance requiring elevator even when a power failure, I mean, stairs are an option, but don't we have any concern about someone who's on the second floor is disabled, unable to use the staircase?
I'm not aware of the regulation. If there is one, no?
It would all be addressed by the building inspector and fire marshal.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, where do you backup?
I have a question, at least, maintain, have they monitored or, or you just set them up and customers start using them and is somebody going in there?
There's an office in there.
Office?
There is an office in the building, so typically, the offices, they'll sell things like packing grates and things of that nature. You can also go in there to sign up for and get the key, things of that nature.
So, it is described...
That would be a typical business hours.
Okay, so it is described as self-storage. So, would owners of the storage units have access to those storage units outside normal business hours?
Yes.
They would?
They would.
So, they would have access even if there wasn't someone in the main office?
Correct.
Okay, and then monitored by security, videos, I'm sure?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not...
Do you want to clarify that earnings?
This is earning, oh, there's a leave for work with Cube Smart, a leave that closes at 8:00, I mean, you can't sit away after that.
Okay, so no one would be able to enter the facility after closing hours 8:00?
It opens at 6:00 morning and closes at 8:00.
So, there would be some additional security so that there wouldn't be access overnight?
The doors are all electronic, block-block, so you can't get out.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right, any other questions or comments on this application? All right, hearing is seeing none, I'll entertain a motion of public hearing.
So, move to close.
Motion by John. Motion by Bart to close, second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed, moving on to the regular meeting. I call the regular meeting to order. We do have additions, corrections to the agenda, two items, A and B. I'll entertain a motion to add those under new business.
So, move to...
Motion by Bart to add, second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Citizen participation, this is opportunity for members of the public to address the board on an item that is not a public hearing or agenda item. Okay? Go ahead.
Question. I'd just like to know...
Just state your name for the record.
Nick Anderson.
Thank you.
When he called, George. I'd like to know what the policy is of the P and G going forward in relation to the conservation subdivision regulations that are on the books, because I've spoken to the town planner in the past few months, and I'm not, I'm just curious, is it, are these regulations going to be sidelined or, you know, not adhered to in the future, or is the planning zoning going to, going to go by these, the requirements of these regulations?
So, Ryan, just to clarify, conservation subdivision is an option to a developer, it is not mandated that they do a conservation subdivision. Am I correct about that?
It's an option to the commission if they like to require it.
Right, so as we look at applications, we make the determination based on a case-by-case basis.
And we always have.
So, they are presented, reviewed, and we have approved conservation subdivision.
Yes, and we've also waived the conservation.
And one with traditional.
Yes.
Okay, so the commission is currently following the process outlined in the regulation, which allows for a waiver of. So, some have been approved and some have been waived.
Yeah.
So, that's the process.
The language in those regulations require a give-and-take, you know, working with the town planner on developing the conservation subdivision regulations. So, I'm not sure that that protocol is actually being followed, because the development of the whole plan goes by, if, if the piece of land requires a conservation subdivision, then that has, that, that plan has to be developed before the plan is submitted to the planning.
And those have been presented to the board, so the process is being followed.
All right.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Hi, Erin, well, I've got a question for the board. As you guys all know, we have a new line that's coming to town that was huge, the development back here. We're right down the street, I believe, September 19th, they're trying to approve two 1 million square foot warehouses in Canterbury, that's not a backyard. You're talking thousands of people need to come here. What do we do? How do we, how do we adapt? And I know a lot of people don't like growth, but the economics of the town, we need growth. As you guys, it's really up to you guys to approve some of this stuff, and really should check it out, you know, and see what other towns really are doing, because we, we need the growth, we need homes, our schools are, you know, it's not an issue anymore, we're only 1 in a 64% capacity of some of these schools, so that's never going to be an issue for us. So, just, you know, as you guys are the ones that go on to this stuff, we need a change from that, you need population, that's what happens.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board? Okay, moving on to unfinished old business, item A 24-6 S P L Plainfield Garage and Storage, site plan review, any items for discussion by the board? So, they have two waiver requests for review. The first was a waiver request for the required 25-foot vegetated buffer. So, as noted, when you review the plan, there is still a vegetated buffer of 13 feet, so it's not a full waiver request, just for clarity. So, does anyone have item for discussion or motion on the first waiver request?
I can make a motion to grant the waiver.
Okay, I have a motion by June to grant the waiver. I have a second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, the second waiver request was for the six-foot chain link fence requirement. Once again, it was not for the entire property, it was for the Route 12 and Dow Road sides of the property. So, I'll entertain a motion on that waiver request.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by June?
Motion.
Second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, both waivers are approved as noted on board plan. Staff noted a few conditions. Engineering review fees must be paid within 30 days and prior to recording of my Lars. The applicant will work with the town engineer to address the remaining drainage design questions, concerns prior to the recording of my Lars. The fire marshal review fee of $50 is to be paid within 30 days and prior to recording my Lars. My Lars are to be recorded prior to receiving the zoning permit to construct. Were there any other conditions, Ryan? Did we have to put anything about the D O T approval?
No, I believe the D O T has great approval.
Oh, the Route 12 is approved?
It is approved.
Okay, thank you.
We have that letter.
Okay, thank you. I just read a note that it was pending, so that's fine, it could have been an old note.
I forgot to strike that, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, no worries. All right, so there were four conditions. Any items of discussion on the remainder of the application? Okay, hearing is seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the application.
We'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
With conditions as read.
I have a second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any extensions?
I'll extend.
One extension, so let the record show Bart has the abstain. So, the application is approved.
And approved.
All right, moving on to item B 24-6 T A, B Paul Kaplan Esquire requesting text amendment to Section 13 sign regulations to allow construction of new billboards along Interstate 395 by special permit. Items of discussion on this application?
So, Madam Chair, so we're clear, this is no longer the exception to the exception, this is a fundamental change to the ordinance to allow under limited conditions, billboards to be built.
Correct, this is a modification of Section 13.
So, our position would shift from we allow none to we allow limited scope under the conditions as outlined in this amendment, clear?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, and staff noted that use of billboards and advertising is not addressed in the plan of conservation and development, so his opinion was that it was neither consistent nor inconsistent with the plan of conservation and development. The applicant, when they submitted, added the language from the promoting of commercial, but in reading the plan of conservation and development, it was really referring to promoting commercial within the town, which we cannot limit the advertising on these boards to exclusively in-town. So, I'm not sure that that, it was a good try, but I don't think that really met the intent of the plan of conservation and development. In looking at the plan of conservation and development, there is a lot of intent and goals of maintaining the semi-rural landscape and the topography and the, essentially, the views, the horizon. So, I would question, would keep in line with the intent to keep the rural landscape of the town intact? So, those are just some points of consideration that I wanted the board to review. So, are there any other items of discussion or review that the board wanted to consider on this application?
I'll actually join your sound, Madam Chair, because in terms of the Green Valley Corridor, I don't find this consistent at all. And I know some will point to Killenley as an exemplar, frankly, I don't want to follow their example on everything, you know? Talk about five-lit expansion is Killenley, this is Plainfield, we make our own ordinance, as we call our own strategy for what does for Art Town. I don't think it's consistent with the Green Valley, right? That's, that's my figure.
And there was a lot of discussion in the plan about the greenways and the maintaining the greenway, so I concur with your assessment on that. Any other points of discussion, Dan, John, or June regarding the...
I'm picturing that these would be on 395.
395 South is what the regulation limits.
And add a distance from the drivers and a distance from the town. I'm trying to picture them on 395.
So, in a packet a couple of months ago, yeah.
I did see that.
Yep.
I didn't think it was that bad. I didn't think it interfered with anything, but so, so that's how I look at it.
Well, and I did find it interesting that surrounding towns, they're not permitted. It appeared to be only...
Apparently, to my knowledge, it's already, they are, they are ready for one, I understand it.
Yep.
I would associate these things with urban areas.
Mm-hmm.
And I agree with you.
Okay, any other points of discussion?
I don't think so, I mean, I know what it looks like up there, I've seen it before, they're all in place, and it was about major changes, so it kind of makes sense from that standpoint. Yeah, we talked about the 50 footer, I think, kind of like the list, 50, you know, on the platform of the highway, of course, you know, that would be...
We have some, we, we do have some eyesight billboards.
So, we have currently existing billboards, but they are grandfathered, so it wouldn't be applicable to this application.
Right.
Yep, that would have to be a separate submission.
Just, just waiting, I know, we can change that.
Oh, discussion for another...
Yeah.
As we review regulations.
Different, different problem.
Yes, but we can definitely lift that up.
I mean, it is limited, right?
I mean, yes, I will agree with you, there is a limitation. I think the scope of this is the text amendment would have to come first, then someone would have to approach through the special permit, the special permit would have to be considered, and then we have to weigh the merits of that. But my concern is by signaling the change to the text amendment, to me, that is a signal we are open to accepting billboard petitions, ergo, why don't we make the change if we're not in line with bringing the special permit down the road? So, just, my consideration is we're kind of, we're going down that road if we can make that change.
And I will, I will say, having served on this board almost 20 years, text amendments are some of the most important changes that we make, because like we said, once the text is there, it allows people to apply.
Right.
So, that's why it's important that we look at the plan of conservation and development and apply that guideline and framework to make sure our regulations are consistent with it. And this is a document that does get reviewed and changed every 10 years, but it is something that we want to be consistent with.
So, could we make it a stipulation of depending on how we vote in terms of the outcome, that either we add an addendum or appendix to the P O C D as currently written, clarifying our position? Right now, the position is we don't have one. I think if we look to make a, to make a direction, we should clarify that so that it's consistent in the P O C D report.
So, there would be a plan of conservation and development commission that would have to be called to revise the...
We can't, we can't do it.
I don't believe so. Am I correct, Ryan? The plan of conservation and development has to be revised by a plan of conservation and development committee. It can't just be changed by planning and something.
Correct, the planning is only...
Can call a plan, got it.
So, what's our next up for P O C D?
2028, so, yeah, four years. Yeah, but it can be called early within 10, but it's just...
I mean, I'm not trying to open the whole box of words, it seems like, since we don't have clear guidance from almost 10 years ago, we're kind of laying the guidance now based on our decision, but just something to keep in mind.
And, and like staff did say, it doesn't address it, but I think there is guidance in goals and intent in regard to the topography and the maintaining a semi-rural landscape, so we can use that as a guide, and the fact that it says to promote internal commercial, whereas we can't control what's... And the fact that it says to promote internal commercial, whereas we can't control what's on these billboards. So once again, we have to understand that this text would apply to all the properties that were listed with the understanding it'd be limited to no more than three. But once again, it's a text amendment that opens the door for applications.
There's nothing that says in text that if this was adopted, it couldn't be further amended.
Correct. So we can further revise the proposed text amendment, so.
I'm sorry. What I mean is if this text amendment were adopted as, as written, that doesn't mean somebody could come in in the future and change.
Correct. Yes, correct. Correct. So once a text is in existence, any applicant could propose a revision or a deletion or an addition. So yes, the, the regulations are not etched in stone. They can be revised by us as a board or, or a member of the public who applies. Correct. Correct. So any other items of discussion on this application?
Probably outside this, maybe it sparks the thought I had of last meeting now. You know, what is it going to mean by ten years from now, right? Does it really matter to this region? Because, you know, to Ernie's point and to the warehouses that are really going to be moving in here, it's no joke, it's going to be a warehouse, you know, hiding. This just happened, right?
Perfectly fair point.
And so, you know, what, what does it mean, right? And how do we take that consideration for this will be the last Green Valley that may no longer be here? We had good views of the last Green Valley. We all know that, right? A bunch of us here certainly. So, you know, it's those types of things, I think there's got to be some sort of way to consider that within these, you know, pro-business, hundred percent, whole building, hundred percent. But I want my kids and just like we were talking about, and grandkids, still really enjoy the rural aspect of this region. That, you know, my family has come to plan their land and worked the fields and. So we should consider all that information when we start doing the plan of conservation and development aspects of.
And, and that is in the plan of conservation and development currently, preserving the last Green Valley. So when you look at page thirty-seven of the plan, it does talk about preserving the, preserving and maintaining the historic and rural landscape of the town. And it does say commercial and industrial development should not take precedent. So when this was written in two thousand eighteen, the members of that board really stressed that, to Dan's point, once development's in, you lose that. So in an effort to balance, right? Because when we talk about what we're doing, we're always trying to bring the balance between the residents, the business, and then also the natural landscape. So just points for consideration. So any other items for discussion? All right, hearing no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion on the application.
So in accordance with parliamentary rules, the motion is to be made to approve.
In affirmative.
In the affirmative, so I will move, I will move through a vote to approve the application.
Okay, I have a motion by Bart to approve. Do I have a second? And remember that if you second the motion, you're not tied to vote that way.
I have a second.
I have a second by June. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. And we'll just do a vote call vote. Dan Kapscavich? You have to, because it was split vote, just say your vote.
Oh, nay.
Nay. Harley De Stradens, nay.
June, oh, sorry.
Don Meyer? Nay.
And Jillson.
Yeah, he is an aye. And Bart Castle is nay. So let the record show, it was one approved, four denied, the application is denied. All right, moving on to.
Point of view.
Yes. So it was a split vote, that's why we did vote call vote. Correct. Yep, so that she can mark the exact. So everyone's votes were recorded. Correct. Okay, very good. All right, item C twenty-four, two S A of custom-built homes by Greg Lado, proposing a nine-lot subdivision with an eight-hundred-foot cul-de-sac road on property located at zero Spalding Road, assessors map twenty-six, block ten, lot twelve, RA sixty zoning district. Do we have speaking for the applicant?
So the applicant has requested to continue until next month, and we do have an extension.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to continue the application.
So move.
A motion by Bart and a second by June. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, move, application's been continued. Moving on to item D twenty-four dash seven S P L Pamela Jones, requesting site plan approval for expansion of employee parking at one thirty-one Norwich Road, assessors map fifteen, block seventy-five, lot four, C-two commercial zoning district. Do we have anyone for the applicant?
The applicant has requested to continue as the plans are complete, and you have an extension of that as well.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to continue.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by June? Second by John. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Application is continued. Item E twenty-four dash one-three S P of Krista Field, requesting special permit for accessory dwelling unit within a commercial building located at two forty-one, two forty-five Main Street, assessors map three M, block one oh three, lot eighteen, C-two zoning district. Do we have any items for discussion on this application? I think when we looked at the plans, it was pretty consistent.
It is. I do have a question for staff, though. I don't want to jump over John to jump over first. So staff question, are affiliate dwelling units, I have, my understanding of them is they were meant to be lived.
For the property. Like in the commercial zones, more set up for rental purposes.
Just wanted some clarification.
Good point, Bart, thank you. John, you want a second? Okay, I have a motion by John to approve. I have a second by June. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Application is approved. Item F twenty-four dash eight S P L of Bejant, Bejiant LLC, requesting permission to construct a gas station convenience store with drive-through and onsite car wash, property located at three forty, three forty-two Prospect Street, assessors map twenty-two, block eighty-eight, lot five, C-two zoning district. Do we have anyone speaking for the applicant? Oh, continue. Just read the note, thank you.
Continue, so move to October the eighth.
All right, I have a motion by Bart and a second by June. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Application is continued. Item G twenty-four dash six S A of Plainfield Industrial Holdings LLC, proposing two-lot re-subdivision of seventy-six Community App, assessors map two P, block thirty A, lot three, Industrial One zoning district. They did note that there were a lot of variances granted by Z D A, so like sideburner setbacks or zero. I didn't see any issues with updating the property line. Did anyone have any points of discussion on this application?
It sounds like there's only one condition recommended by staff, and it is that the applicant is to add an I W W C approval block to the Mylar's. Is that consistent, Ryan? Any other stipulations?
No, I don't do it.
I would move to approve.
Okay. So I have a motion by Bart to approve with stipulation and a second by June. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, application is approved with that one condition. Item H twenty-four dash one-zero T A of Killenley Engineering Associates, requesting a text amendment to section seven point two-five of the zoning regulations pertaining to interior lot sizes and interior lot access. Any items of discussion for this application?
I would like to say in light of the plan of conservation and development, absolutely not. You start doubling the population, and you're going to lose your housing stock for the United, the USDA goal development. Who knows that Plainfield has had traditionally a lot of opportunity to build more houses to those homes? And I just don't approve. I realize that they're building homes, they want to build homes, but to double the population like that, I just don't agree with that.
I have, I have concerns as well, considering that there are already existing interior lots, but we don't have a clear inventory of those lots, nor do we have indication of how this regulation would impact already existing. And although we can suppose that it'd be too expensive to do or other things, once again, once we change the regulation and it allows it, you know, and especially if it was by right and not special permit. So I do have those concerns as well, that's kind of zero sixty.
Madam Chair, question, could you please, are they intrinsically tied? Is there any, I mean, I'm not saying I want to throw everything out. I want to at least be considerate to the people who are trying to build. I want to understand, because it's not my expertise. Is there the ability to sever the two requests in terms of, does the square footage and the lot driveway share? Are those two tied to each other, or are we allowed to consider? No, Ryan, shake his head a little bit.
You can modify this however you like, for these are your regulations.
I understand. What I'm trying to, forgive me, I apologize, is there a development or intrinsic tie that one drives the other, that the footage dictates easier or better construction under the share, or the share drives the lot reduction in terms of square footage for rear areas?
No. So what it is, is, is cause developers to say, well, we could get ten lots on a road, but we can get two furnished lots and five interior lots with a shared driveway. So we're going to go with the eight lots rather than the ten. And so, but what it's going to do is it's going to cut down sort of the surface area for the road. It falls more in line with lower pack development, which is something that we like. I, I do work mostly with the, with the maintenance garage. They are stretched already there. We have limited personnel at maintenance for the highway department. Anytime we add a new road, that is more work for them to maintain. You've got cash basins, you've got detention swales, detention basins, drainage swales, filing, sanding, and eventually paving. So any time a house is building, you get taxes on it. If you have ten houses on a road, you're going to have to maintain that road. So taxes that you're getting from those houses starts to decrease. If you have a shared driveway, then you don't have to maintain it. People will be maintaining it. So all the taxes are repaid. I think it's a win. If you don't like five on, on a road right away, we could cut it down to three or four.
I, I, again, I'm simply trying to understand if they're tied together, if the square footage drives the share or not. Just so I can, and again, if, if I take it at face value that we have a significant housing shortage in all areas, and we say that we have a need, it almost makes, to me, it sounds like you're saying this really isn't enough of a debt. Based on what Mr. Colio, Mr. Couch said, it's a little bit of a help, but it actually doesn't sound like it's going to save money on the price of the home or on the developer's cost in maximum law, right? Because they still have to purchase the property, still have to buy the house. It's a small reduction. I just don't know if it's worth squeezing. I want to understand. I don't want to put out a regulation that helps a little, but doesn't really benefit either developer or the homeowner that's coming to the house.
Well, if you're looking at it from a standpoint of you're either going to go a road or you're going to do a shared driveway, you get less of lots on a shared driveway, that is a tremendous cost difference.
But I would just caution that as the plan is zoning permission, we do not evaluate tax revenue. We look at opportunities and land use and character of the town. So density, so I would, I would just caution looking at dollars and cents, because.
Certainly not my intent, but I appreciate your caution.
Because we do have to look at a broader picture of what kind of town do we want to live in? How do we want the housing to be laid out, right? And you know, what I hear is that, I think everybody's like five hundred is too much, if I'm hearing that. RA thirties, forty and sixty, it would have to comply with the underlying zone. So for example, an RA sixty lot could not be less than one point three eight acres. When we asked Norm about how he came up with the square footages, he did say he based it on five lots, so he just kind of reduced proportionally. So the assumption would be if you reduce the number of lots, then you would increase that area requirement. So there is flexibility for the board to revise this regulation, but if it's a substantive change, it would likely have to be re-submitted and go back to public hearing. Am I right, Ryan? Because we did close a public hearing.
Right, but I don't see anything to be a substantive change. If you're modifying the number of driveways on a shared drive, that's minor. If you don't like cutting down the lot sizes a little bit, that's also okay.
So for example, if we wanted to insert language for a limitation on the length of the driveway or a special permit require, that would be substantive?
I don't, I don't believe so.
You don't think adding a special permit requirement would be substantive?
Oh, adding a special permit, yeah, that would be.
Okay. And then currently, you said there's no limit on the length of driveway. So if we were to insert a limit on the length, would that be considered substantive?
It's questionable.
I would think it might be. So it's up to the board. So the options you could have. And just question it, if there was a revision, would a new application have to be filed to reopen public hearing, or could the board vote to reopen public hearing?
No, you'd have to.
Submit a new application. Okay, that's what I thought. And a decision does not have to be made on this tonight, correct, Ryan? We have thirty days to thirty-five days to decide?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, okay. So we have sixty-five days to make a decision. So if you are in an informational mode and want to take a month to think about the items that have been considered, the public hearing is closed. So substantive changes cannot be made. Under advisement of staff, he's indicating the area requirement and the lots would not be substantive. But if we wanted to add a special permit requirement or limit the length of driveways, that could be seen as substantive, which would require a new application.
You'd also get a, get a thing to be turned if you'd like.
Okay. And I think all the more reason to continue this decision to next month.
I would like to deny it.
Okay, so I have a motion to continue. Do I have a second on that motion? Going once? Okay, hearing no second, the motion dies. Do I have another motion?
Can we deny motions?
So you can make a motion to deny, but, but if a motion to deny failed, then you would inversely need a motion to approve for it to actually approve. Because a failure of denial is not an approval. Does that make sense? So, but once again, when you make a motion, you are not tied to that, you are not tied to vote in the affirmative if you make an affirmative motion.
Need to continue again.
I have a motion to continue. Do I have a second? Hearing no second, the motion dies.
I will.
But the floor is still open for another motion.
Point of discussion.
Yeah.
On this, obviously, it's a problem.
Sure.
You know, die, instead of making process, you know, right? If any understanding of true impact of whether somebody would go paying bus or his pockets, right? That's always a potential, that's the risk that we take on here.
Correct. I would see it. Just let him finish his.
Yeah, so I, I think that's something, I know it's maybe difficult to understand. Maybe Carl had the question, right? Based on what we have today, if this takes place, what's the potential impact? Right, can we project that out? That, it may be difficult. Right?
Correct.
Yeah, if you're asking, what do we currently have for potential interior lots, that would take extensive.
Inventory, yeah, yeah.
But personally, I don't think that we're going to see much from this. You're going to see a couple of new houses out of it. I don't think we're going to see very much.
Staff question? Ryan?
Hold on, Bart, June was next.
Oh, no, I don't know what to do, because I want to deny it.
I'm concerned.
I, I've done that before, and that's why I'm kind of confused.
Okay, so Bart first and John.
So, Ryan, forgive me, with this text amendment as it stands, we would still have to see a site plan and builder's plan even to take advantage of this as it was modified. Is that correct?
It would be a subdivision that came before you.
Right, so assuming whatever text changes are made are made, it's not like it's a free will. The builders and the developers are still going to have to come before us and lay out how they meet these conditions and the stipulations. And that, again, falls back to the commission to determine whether the program decision's under your statement?
Yes.
Okay.
But with the understanding that when an application comes before us and meets the regulation, it is nearly impossible to deny because you have no grounds to deny if it meets the regulations as outlined.
Absolutely.
So once again, it is in respecting the regulation that when we have a regulation in place with the understanding that when an applicant comes forward and they meet regulation, you're really legally required to approve it. Thank you, John. John, and June.
My thought, if you just stated, Carl, I think that this might be something that could work, but it needs more work. That's whatever could happen.
And so what could happen? We could, if the application was denied, it would go back to the applicant to do more work to bring forward a regulation that would have more data, more information, and alleviate some, because this really is, I feel, a significant increase without a lot of protections to ensure that development doesn't happen too fast. And the assurance of it's too expensive or the market might not bear, you don't know that, like...
And those things change.
Correct.
But I think this, like I said, could work, but I think that in order to protect the town, it could need some tweaking at least.
I would like to deny it.
So the floor is open for a motion. So if there's a motion you want to put on the floor?
Can I put that up?
You can absolutely make a motion to deny.
I'm going to put that motion up.
Okay, so I have a motion to deny by June. Do I have a second on that motion?
Also.
I have a second by John. So by voting yes, you are voting to deny the application. By voting no, you're voting not to deny. All those in favor of denying the application, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Nay. So we do have a split vote, so I'm going to call for a roll call vote. Dan Katskevich? Prada Bistraddens, aye.
Aye.
John Meyer, aye.
June Gagni, aye.
June Gagni, aye.
Bart Hassel, nay.
Bart Hassel, nay. So the motion to deny is approved with a three to two. So the text amendment is not passed. It has been denied by a three to two vote.
Point of question?
Yes.
If we're denying the text amendment on its base because we are uncomfortable with it, what guidance are we going to have the petitioner to come back and satisfy what we are unhappy with?
So I think our points of discussion, so the density, the number of lots, the RA 60, the special permit and the limit on driveway, driveway length. So those were all the points that board members brought up. So that would, if the applicant decided to return with another application, those things would be things that were pointed out by the board. And it'll be in the minutes, correct? All right. Moving on to new business, item A, 24-9 SPL Plainfield Pipe LLC requesting site plan review for modifications to an existing warehouse facility for parking, drive aisles, retaining walls, stormwater drainage on property located at 113 Plainfield Pipe, assessors map 17, block 36, lot 68, industrial 1 and 2 zoning districts. And we have speaking for the applicant.
Hi, David, John Schurz, probably directly from the office.
Do we have these, Ryan, these plans?
Yes, they're actually under you, but...
Oh, they were first plans, okay. Got it. So this was the first plan that he had handed out. Pardon me, guys? It hasn't, on this meeting. Hey, we passed the two-hour mark for you, Charlie. All right, and just direct us what page you're on.
So this is sheet SP0, the overall site plan. I'll just give you a brief rundown of what we've... So SP0, this is exactly the original rule. And I just wanted to note that what we're talking about tonight is the employee parking lot. It's located at this location. It's the shaded area on the, basically the north, that's the corner of the lot. So kind of like here, right is this, I'm looking at this side here. So we're talking about this parking lot here. Now, as you know, we're under construction. Site's already approved, obviously, we're here to modify a piece of the development that we're in the middle of designing now. So there's currently a retaining wall proposed along the employee parking lot. The highest point of that wall, under the current rule, is 60 feet high. That wall is constructed, it's further, the materials provided by manufacturers who provide the block, they designed the block, and they also provide a engineer design for the wall itself. We've gone back and forth with the manufacturers, designers, there's third-party engineers for the wall. And for various reasons, we've been asked to reduce the height of the wall. So again, the current design was for a 60-foot-high wall. What we're doing now, opposing is to lower that wall to a 45-foot height. So this entire parking lot would be lowered 15 feet. But we're keeping the rest of the development at the same height. So to make up that difference in 15 feet, we have to add another retaining wall on the eastbound side of that, of that employee lot. So let's highlight on this plan, called SP0. So what we've done is to add a new retaining wall at this location to make up that 15-foot difference. So we have the lot at one elevation, we're going to lower it 15 feet, postpone it a little bit to reduce the wall and the truck ports at the same elevation. That's more or less the gist of what we're here to formulate. There are a couple of minor items, the lowering the lot, we did lose three parking spaces. You're kind of overparked before, so that's not an issue for the applicant. And they were also redirecting some of the stormwater that came off of here a little further to the west. By and large, the previous area, without three parking spaces, more or less the same. Parking lot is in the same horizontal location. It doesn't move, it just gets lower by elevation. And again, in previous coverage, roughly more or less the same. That's briefly it in a nutshell, so I have to answer any questions.
So did the change of the walls change any of the stormwater drainage flows, the direction or location?
Not the walls itself, no. So the stormwater here, previously, if you looked at, I'll just look at sheet GD0, that was the overall rating plan. So stormwater in this area before always outletted very close to Plainfield Pipe at this location. The water was collected in the stormwater system, was piped down the western driveway and then discharged this location. What we're doing is still discharging the water there, but we're providing a swale to then carry that water further, further to the south here where we can then carry across. So there's solar fields here, there's an access driveway currently to the solar field. We're trying to get the water across that driveway. We own a portion of the driveway. We have rights to the other portion of it. What we're doing is carrying that water further to the south where we can then cross the driveway and discharge that water at another location. But so we're still discharging the water at the same spot, close to the Plainfield Pipe.
What dispersing it?
With the swale, we're carrying it further south.
Okay, got it.
So you're thinking of culvert under the road dispersed underground toward the solar field?
No, the solar field, solar property is here. Solar field is further to the south. The discharge would be well to the north.
It goes under the road, it was listed here in the report.
That's correct. The solar field is further south.
So not the solar field, but you are going to think under that driveway to create a drainage area.
To discharge.
To discharge.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Any additional comments from staff?
If we are still here in the pause, we'd like to continue to explore.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to continue.
Don't move.
I have a motion by Bart and a second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application is through? I mean, continue? Application is continued?
Boy, you made him feel happy.
I know, I'm sorry. Sorry, continue, it's getting late. Item B, 24-1 SP of American Industries modification. This is, special permit requires public hearing, correct, Ryan?
Yes.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to scheduled public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by June, scheduled public hearing. Second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Public hearing is continued. The minutes were not included, so I'll entertain a motion to continue review of the minutes.
Yeah, I was looking for minutes. I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by June to continue the minutes and a second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meaning that review is continued. Any correspondence?
No correspondence.
No correspondence. Report from zoning enforcement.
I just attached them to the packets.
Okay. A report from planning.
So the Shepherd Hill sidewalk project is not complete for that phase, that was phase 1B. We are looking to continue in the future, going south on Route 12 to connect the sidewalks near the tennis courts by the school. Also, we're looking to go to north on Route 12 and then down to Route 5. Those will be subsequent phases that we are looking to. So the sidewalk project in the southern end of town in front of CVS, going under 95 toward Big Y. We are just about at final approvals for that, but we have likely missed the window to start construction this season. So we will be probably pushing that to the springtime.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Under other, we have the discussion of the gravel operation regulations. So included in your packet was draft revisions and language. And you can see that staff did a lot of cleanup on language as well. There are non-conforming operations and the language just kind of talked about the process to become a non-conforming operation, which of course, that was 30-something years ago. So that's already done. So essentially, they cleaned up the language so that it indicates that those operations in existence prior to '72 are non-conforming and exempt and that they had to be registered with the town by '92 to meet that qualification. So there's a lot of cleanup language. Also, we had talked about limiting the amount of material that's taken out before requiring a gravel operation permit. And then we had also talked about limiting hours of operation and then increasing buffering. So you can read through and see all those changes. So from a processing standpoint, if you feel this regulation meets what you wanted to put forward, we can put forward an application at our next meeting, which would then be scheduled for public hearing in November, right, Ryan?
You could also schedule a public hearing for next month if you'd like.
That's true.
Oh, without the application filed?
Right, you can put in the application, you can schedule a public hearing for next month if you wish. It'll be put in the application tomorrow, that'll be fine.
Okay, so with the advisement of staff, if you want to move forward with the language as presented, we could schedule the public hearing for October. If you wanted to make further revisions to the draft, we can also make changes while the public hearing is open. Remembering that the moratorium expires January 1st.
Yes, Ryan.
So we have three meetings between now and expiration.
Can I make a motion to continue?
So it's not an application right now?
Well, I mean, to continue talking.
Sure, so...
I have a question. The verbiage did change when I think they were originally submitted, maybe some of your comments John ended up putting in. So I was pleased to see some input in here. I'm curious if these were subject matter experts that were consulted to, in the exception side of it, are you able to provide names or how you ended up with the two through six?
Katie does research on the towns. We kind of went through, we picked what looked to be good for the towns and circled.
Which I do believe in August, I think we're writing, there are some...
Okay, merged into this, okay. That's what I was wondering. I saw some good communications in there with regard to it. I noticed that the operating farms portion was fully scratched. So of course, my eyes went on to that, if you're familiar with that.
Well, I think that's incorporated in other sections.
Yeah, so I see, you know, it's not as descriptive as, or isolating out, you know, farming specifically. And then points to the agricultural aspect of it, so cool. You know, I was reading it through with that type of lens. I don't know if anybody else has had that opportunity to view it yet.
We have only had this for two.
Right. So we do have a motion on the table where June just wanted to continue discussion. So do I have a second on that motion? I have a second by John. So all in favor of continuing discussion to next month, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, so for next meeting, be sure to review the draft as presented. Make any notations, and then at our next meeting, we can consider sending it to public hearing. All right, excellent, and really great job, staff, on these, really great job.
You should do a lot of work.
Great job, Katie.
Especially with the time.
All right.
I don't want to be offline about the duration portion of it, there are...
Which item do you have?
The time, the time aspect. I did want to have further discussion on that, continue for next week. I just want a little more of the change rationale that goes along with it, that maybe you guys have one that's really being under worked for current time.
Sure.
Just to make sure we, I want to fully discuss that, see if it makes sense for the operations that are currently underway.
I think, Dan, if I may, Madam Chair, the, I was probably one of the pushers for it is, we've had a lot of reapplications of what I would consider to be small or personal gravel operations who consistently insist that they need to be able to start at 7:00 AM on a Saturday and basically run all that. Yet, they come before the committee and say, oh, I do five or six truckloads a month at max. Well, respectfully, to neighbors, to roadways, why do you need to be able to start? I mean, I don't know the gravel business, I'll be the first one to admit I don't know the gravel pit. But if you have a 40-plus hour window during the week, and if we give you a weekend window of, say, 8 to 4 on a Saturday, I'm failing to understand why that 7:00 AM is so critical to people. I have yet to personally hear from anyone who's spoken to me about it why a personal pit needs that type of operation. And frankly, given the number of pits we have in town and the number of commercial versus personal, I would be more comfortable bringing them into some level of consistency to say all of our pits follow the same general practices for hours on... Now, that's my opinion.
Except non-conforming.
With the exception, of course, non-conforming part of the 1972 extended. But from my perspective, Dan, I'm trying to bring them into alignment. If you disagree, I respect that, let's have that debate because that's worth having. You know, I want, I want to try to get some consistency amongst our pits.
Well, I think also what was happening was the board was pretty consistently approving 8 to 5 with the Saturday hours. So I think the discussion was why allow an expanded window if that's not really what we're ever going to approve? Also, the industrial district has, it says in all but the industrial, so industrial has a lot more freedom. We can still stipulate reasonable operating hours, depending on what it's bordering. But I think that was an important distinction. Some of the most complaints we get is from neighbors of operations. So it's, once again, just trying to find the balance between the two.
Yeah, reading out, seeing, okay, what is operation? So I'll put myself at the triaxle, it's got to go down to North Bramford. Let's take that as an example. I'd like to have that truck on the road to beat the traffic, right? So those aspects I want us to consider, right? Because we're not subject matter experts, we don't have to deal with it, right? So if you have a stockpile of stone, or you deal with all the kinds, you want to be able to get that truck on a road so that it's gone, right? So there'll be, I just want to be careful on over restricting those types of...
And Ryan, does we have some flexibility?
One example is...
Like some flexibility, like for example, if the truck was preloaded, somebody could start a truck and leave prior to, did we have a window for that?
No, we didn't.
We didn't, okay, all right.
I mean, I understand, I don't want to crush her running at 6:00 in the morning.
Yeah, exactly.
I completely understand that, right? But I don't want to say, hey, somebody complains about you operating while my regulations say 8:00 AM. 8:00 AM, like buses are running at 6:00 o'clock in the morning, waking me up, right? So I just want to be, well, the gardeners trump. I want to be cognizant of those other businesses that are allowed to already be a nuisance with respect to now we're targeting the aggregate manufacturer, you know, but we got a lot of them. So those are the things I just want to make sure we think through.
I could see where it might be an issue for some operations, like Ross and Lockyer. They're out in the middle of nowhere. I'd say we probably start around 7:00 because they are in operation. So if you tell them, well, maybe I start at 8:00, that screws up what they've been doing for the past 25 years. Also, you have some smaller pits that are operated basically by local contractors where they go to the pits at 7:00 in the morning, they get loaded up, they have their jobs made.
And this is the flexibility that we want to consider. So we could change that start time, put it back to 7, but leave the end time 5:00 AM.
Could be that.
Yeah.
Point of, we're continuing the discussion.
Exactly, yeah.
I just wanted to make those few things that are going through my mind as...
Yeah, and with fresh brains, because having been already past the two-hour mark, I know my brain is going to start to slow down. So we have the motion and the second to continue, it was voted. So we will continue this discussion. Please bring, you know, your annotations for next meeting. So then we also had the modifications to the EV chargers. Katie and Ryan provided. Katie and Ryan provided that information.
Basically, the real life, we brought forward because when we initially held the regulations for EV chargers, we were concerned that with the amount of legislation that the federal government and state government was pushing on electric vehicles that were innovated with EVs, they weren't going to have a place to charge. And we're going to have similar situations in what's out west, where you have limited EV chargers and backups for a mile, where people wait for hours in time of traffic. That did not happen around here. The regulations that we put in place to try to limitate that have made it very restrictive. So, we haven't been able to get any EV chargers in place. So, this is just to try to loosen things up a little bit, make it a little more easy.
Any other points of discussion in this application?
I would move we add it to the agenda for the October meeting.
As a public hearing?
As a public hearing.